Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
I'd first like to welcome my fellow board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Selectman Chicalini won't be here this evening. He had a prior engagement. I would also like to welcome our town manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, and our clerk, Janice DeRose. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home. The first piece of correspondence that we have is a request from the First Baptist Church, 105 Main Street, Saugus, Mass., for permission to hang a banner at Main Street and Vine Street from August 26th through September 22nd, 2024. And this is being requested from Deacon Edward Campbell. Is the deacon here this evening? Well, he was at the last meeting and he did request the banner. Everything is in order. Do board members have any questions or do you feel comfortable making a motion this evening?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. The next piece of correspondence is a request from Saugus Youth Football and Cheer, Mr. Gregory Bluestein, representative, for permission to hang a banner at Main Street and Vine Street from June 1st to July 1st, 2024. Is there anybody here from Saugus Youth Football and Cheer?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the permit for a banner for the Saugus Youth Football and Cheer leaders with the same conditions that we always have true.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all. Next, we have a piece of correspondence. The American Legion Post 210, Saugus Memorial Blood Drive, in memory of Corporal Scott J. Procopio and Captain William G. Shoemaker, Legion Post Hall 44 Taylor Street in Saugus, Saturday, June 1st, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our next piece of correspondence is the Firefighter Memorial Sunday, which will be held this year on Sunday, June 9th, at 10:00 a.m. And it will be at their headquarters at 27 Hamilton Street. Friends and family are welcome to attend, and they're honoring all who served. That's always a fun day out. Next, we have an invitation to the Lynn Recovery Court Graduation Ceremony on June 18th, 2024, at 2:00 p.m. This is Lynn District Court, Second Session. The board also received two invitations from Brendan Sullivan, the principal at the Saugus Middle High School. The first one is actually for tomorrow night, Senior Academic Service and Scholarship Award Night, Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. The location is the Saugus Middle High School, the Lemoyne Mitchell Auditorium. And then we also have the Saugus High School Graduation Ceremony, which will be held this coming Friday, May 31st, at 6:00 p.m. And the location is the Christie Sereno J. Memorial Stadium at 6:00 p.m. And they just had the graduation parade right before this meeting, and it's always a lot of fun, and they're very excited, so congratulations to all of our seniors. The next item on the agenda under correspondence is Church Street Creole Cafe, Inc., doing business as Border Cafe, 356 Broadway, Saugus, Mass., requesting permanent outdoor seating at stated location, and the map is included. And would you like to come up to our podium right now? And if you could please give your name and address for our record, please.
Greg Sherman. Address is 16 March Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thank you. So, in the past, this board has granted you temporary seating outside.
Correct.
And our clerk and I attended the meeting with the ABCC regarding outside seating, and then I followed up with the ABC directly after that, and we found out that the Border Cafe only has ever had temporary seating, not permanent seating. And that's the reason why we asked you to come in tonight, so that we could make your temporary seating permanent seating.
Correct.
We do have what was asked in the past, and we would like to know a little bit about what you're looking forward, what you would like moving forward.
So, it would be the same that we've done in the past. The difference between what we've done in the past versus how we've rectified it now is it's now a permanent structure, physically attached to our building, the same way you would find a pergola in some of the other residents. Ours is now a permanent structure based off of our building itself, from the roof to the floor, with safety measures taking place in front as well.
Okay. Do board members have any questions?
No, Madam Chairman. It looks like it's in the same location as you have been over there for years, using it for years.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the 7,350 square foot restaurant, one floor, seating 275 patrons, additional outside seating area with seven tables, size of area 100 by 15, heavyweight planter barriers to be placed to the border at the outdoor seating area in the parking lot. All beverage service in accordance with all requirements and regulations pertaining to our current liquor license. Emergency exits kept clear. If tent, flammability certificate required. Fire extinguishers properly placed. Attitude protection from traffic and fire department required. An additional certificate of inspection for outdoor seating by inspection services needed every year, and not to exceed existing allowable seating.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion?
Just in any change in the plan, we'd require a return of the Board of Selectmen.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that okay, Selectman Cogliano?
Sure.
With that, perfect. So, we're seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comment. Would anybody like to address the board? And we all know who you are, but if you could please give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. John Kane, Knight Atlanta Cav, Saugus. What I'd like to address the board tonight is I've been doing the parades for over 40 years in Saugus as a little Cub Scout, as a Boy Scout, and now as a Scout leader. What I've noticed in the past, when I was younger, we never had any traffic entering the parade route. And recently, I've noticed there's been a lot more traffic in the parade route. Can you guys hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Wanted to know if there's some way that we could address that for safety. During this past parade, it was pretty hot. I had a few of my scouts up towards the front of the parade, carrying a banner for the Veterans' Council. And I was sitting over by Church Street. A car had come out. There was a break in the parade. Came out a pretty good clip. It wasn't speeding, but he came out at a good acceleration, heading towards a crowd of people. I've noticed during the parade that we've had, I believe there were veterans in wheelchairs being pushed along the route. We have young kids there. Some of them don't pay attention that well, as everybody might know. And we also have our senior veterans who may not be able to get out of the way in time if a car did come towards it. What I would like to see is a way to shut down that road on the parade route during the parade to make it easier and safer for the community, for both young and old. Perhaps you guys could put up some caution tape, a police tape going across the side streets along Central, Essex, Lincoln. But we got to do something. These cars are going. They come out into the road, and they end up aiming towards the people. During the car that had seen come out, there was a, he had come out at a pretty good speed. He didn't realize that there was actually a parade because there was a break in the parade. So, he just assumed just driving down towards Saugus Center, which would have been a huge problem if I didn't yell at him. I did grab the attention of him and some of the other people around me while I was waiting for my troop to come join us. And I just think it's a huge safety concern, so I didn't know if there was a way, possible, who to talk to, that we could go and get those stuff to be safer. Walking off the roads, I think, would be the best way to do it. I know it's going to be inconvenient for people, but, you know, you could send out a notice ahead of time to people a couple of weeks, just so everybody knows from this time to this time, expect not to get out of your side street from your house to go down to the store or wherever they need to go. And also for the people that are coming to watch the parade, you guys have to, if you guys are going to park along the route, be parked by a certain time or else you're not going to be able to get in there. So, I don't know if we could do, what we could do about it, but I'd like to just make that you guys aware of what was happening.
Well, Mr. Kane, thank you for coming before us tonight. Mr. Town Manager, are there any ideas you think the police might have to try to make that route a little safer? Do you think we can reach out to the police and perhaps we could, they could either reach out to the Veterans' Council or the board can reach out to the Veterans' Council and send a letter?
Yeah, I think maybe if, maybe he talks directly because he sounds like he has some ideas, maybe if he reaches out directly to the council and then with the police, and they can try to come up with some ideas for next year. I think that might be, you know, very efficient.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm sure they're always looking for ideas. I mean, the police obviously deal with a lot. There's, you know, unfortunately, these parades all over, there's always something that can happen or there's no perfect system.
Yeah.
But I think if he brings his ideas maybe to the council with the police and tries to, you know, talk about it and maybe try to improve it for next year, I think that would be great.
Selectman Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kane, if you could reach out to Captain Castanetti, retired captain. We always, the council always has the police there, like the meeting before the event itself. So, there's always a policeman at our Veterans' Council meetings and discussing the streets and things like that.
Okay.
So, you know, if that could be something ahead of time, but the night of that, Steve always has someone from the police department there, you know, that could help too if you could come to that meeting.
Sure, I can address Mr. Castanetti.
Selectman Serena.
Yeah, just a suggestion I have is I noticed School Street, I think Adams Avenue, Denver Street, those main roads that come on to Central, maybe if there's a cruiser at the end of them streets. There used to be years ago. I don't know if there were any this year. I didn't notice any, but that might help too in the situation of people coming into the parade.
Do you have the contact information for Captain Castanetti?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Very great. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming before us. I mean, anything we can do to make it safer.
Sure. When I ever seen that car come out and head towards people in wheelchairs, that was enough for me.
Which street did he come out of, John?
He came out of Church Street with old senior senators, and he headed down towards Saugus Center. That was nice and loud. Woke him right up and he realized.
Gee, that's a real small side street coming down off the hill. You'd think there would have been.
Yeah. I mean, you got the acceleration from the hill, but it was like him taking off to go on Route 1. It was, you know, all he thought about was just the people in the wheelchairs and.
All the chase is.
The veterans that aren't going to move around too great and be able to run out of the way, so.
Yeah.
Something that we should definitely get done.
Again, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and we'll try to take some action and work with you and do whatever we can to make that parade route safer for next year.
Sure. Yep, even for the Veterans Day Parade. I know we usually just meet on the corner, but I'm thinking, you know, we should be able to do something to make it a little bit safer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
John, have a good night.
Good night. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak for citizens' comment? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda was the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
I don't have anything this evening.
You don't have anything this evening?
Town meeting is almost over.
What's that?
Town meeting is almost over.
Yes.
So, next Monday, so next Monday night will probably be the last session of town meeting.
Yeah. Hopefully.
You never know.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do board members have any questions for the town manager this evening? The next item on the agenda is under new business. There were a couple of articles that Town Meeting passed that require members of the Board of Selectmen to participate. The first one is the Apartment Inspection Committee. That was Article 24 that I believe passed unanimously from Town Meeting. And I did speak with Selectman Chicalini, and he was interested in being on that committee.
Just a, Madam Chairman, I think the annual has to close, I think, before that these become active.
Okay.
Because there's actually a process where somebody could.
So, you're telling me to wait before I tell people? Is that what you're saying?
Wait until the annual town meeting closes.
All right. I will then defer the next two components to the end. But if you're interested in being on the Apartment Inspection Committee or on the Ashland Field Closure Committee, you can let me know.
Thank you.
The next item under new business is under a proclamation for Pride Month. And Selectman Riley, could you please read that into the record, please?
Saugus Board of Selectmen Pride Proclamation. Whereas Pride Month begins in June, began in June, I apologize, 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, after the LGBTQ+ persons and their allies rose up to fight against discriminatory laws, which have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas Saugus, Mass. denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, race, religion, nation, origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and is a town in which all persons should feel valued, safe, welcomed, respected, and affirmed by the peers in the community. And whereas all are welcome in Saugus, Mass. to live, work, and play in every family, in all of its various forms, deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas Saugus, Mass. appreciates the value and dignity of each person, recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and acknowledges the positive contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community to actively promote principles of equality, acceptance, and love. Now, therefore, the Saugus Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 in the town of Saugus as Pride Month.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. And that motion is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion regarding the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Selectman Riley.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is selectmen appointments. The first appointment we have is from Ms. Erica Mashut, and she is requesting a reappointment to the Board of Registars. I checked with Ellen Schenna today, and this term would be expiring March 31st, 2027.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I'll make a motion that we confirm the appointment of Erica Mashut for another three-year term on the Board of Registars, term to expire March 2027.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have Mr. Rodolfo Saldaraga, 5 Juliet Road, and he's requesting an appointment to the Saugus Cultural Council, and this would be expiring December 31st, 2026. The candidate is actually going to come up to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
We know who you are and we know your address because it's right here, but could you say it anyway for the record?
So, actually, my address is 12 Juliet Road.
Oh, no.
That's it.
Okay. Do board members have any questions that they would like to ask?
No, it seems like you have a pretty big resume in developing programs to help people. Harvard, Mel Institute in Boston, First Families in Watertown, Homeless Prevention Council in Orleans, Mass., Home Start, Inc., Boston, Mass. So, it's really an impressive resume you have here.
I concur with Selectman Serena. It's, it really is an impressive resume, and we thank you for getting involved with the town of Saugus and wanting to be on the Cultural Council. Do board members have any additional questions?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We appoint Rodolfo Saldaraga to the Saugus Cultural Council, term to expire December 2027.
26.
26?
Yeah, because we can't, yeah, but we can't go, we can't go over three years, so we can't, so we got to go, because 24, 25, 26, that would be two and a half years. We can't go three and a half years.
Okay. 2026.
And that's seconded by the chair. We have to be very specific with the chair.
You can only serve on this side two, three-year terms, and I think that's the limit on the Cultural Council, and you have to get off a few years, then maybe come back.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
The next item on the agenda under appointments is Ms. Andrea Bell, and she's requesting reappointment to the Library Board of Trustees. And because we're already past March, we can make it go to 2027. We can make it go to March 31st, 2027. She's already serving, so this is a reappointment, and she reached out saying that she would like to extend her term.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Riley.
Make a motion to approve the request of Andrea Bell for reappointment to the Library Board of Trustees, expiring on March 31st, 2027.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of minutes. We have five sets of minutes. The first set of minutes, and I want to thank Selectman Sereno and Selectman Riley for helping me with the minutes. The first set of minutes is November 21st, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. The next set of minutes is March 5th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion to approve the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. The next set of minutes are April 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
And that is seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Sereno's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. The next set of minutes are April 30th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, I think it was Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And the last set of minutes are dated May 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And that's seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all. I appreciate everyone's hard work. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board? And your name and address just for the record, please.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Mark Sacco, 16 Westford Street, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. I'm just here to follow up on my initial request for a legal opinion regarding the Frederick Stalker Playground deed in relation to its bequest to forever remain solely as a children's playground, relevant to what was mentioned during last month's Saugus Dog Park Forum. And I also had a couple questions to bring forward. And just to state for the record, the request for a legal opinion was made to Town Manager's office prior to the dog forum. Furthermore, in speaking with my constituents, it was mentioned upon the close of the dog forum meeting by Town Manager himself of his new consideration for studying alternative locations. With this being said, I'm also looking to follow up and ask if the town is in fact studying other dog park locations. And to add a second part to the question, does Town Manager have anything more to add that could help put my constituents and the rest of Stalker/Riverside Court neighborhoods at ease tonight regarding the future of Stalker Playground?
Regarding the legal opinion, all legal opinions go to John Vasapoli, who's our Town Council. I do believe today you did send him a question asking for a legal opinion. They wouldn't go through the Selectmen or the Town Manager, so hopefully our Town Council will get back to you quickly on that one. The Board of Selectmen, none of us are on the Dog Park Committee. We don't have any, I could tell you, the four of us have not been involved with the, anything to do with the Dog Park Committee, even though I think we all attended and we're engaged, we're not part of the committee. Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything you would like to add at this time?
I don't. There's a dog committee, Dog Park Committee that was formed. They, you know, have done their own meetings and whatever they've done, and then they've asked me to help assist in moving forward with what they've put together, but I'm not on the Dog Committee Park, the Dog Park Committee. So, I think whatever his questions would be, would be to address them to the Dog Park Committee.
Okay, because like I said in opening, I did mention that you had mentioned to my constituents about considering the idea of looking at alternate locations. Is that, have you had any further discussions on that?
I haven't. It wouldn't be me looking at those. It's not, it's a Dog Park Committee that's initiated this.
Okay.
So, it'd be up to them to look at whatever they're going to look at. It's not a town, you know, town project, so to speak. With the Stanton Foundation, it's a nonprofit that actually has to apply and maintain and, you know, initiate the project.
Understood. Okay. I think we're all aware, though, this discussion's been going on for two years, and, you know, I'm just trying to follow up for my constituents. You know, they, it's, you know, the people want answers, for lack of better terms, and, you know, here I am, just a new Town Meeting Member, just trying to support my constituents, and if you have any other comments, I appreciate it.
I just got a quick question. Mark, did you pull up the deed on the property yet?
I did.
SalemDeeds.com, you should be able to pull the deed right off the website.
Right.
What did it say on the deed?
To forever solely remain as a children's playground.
I believe that's the answer there. I don't know if you could get a dog park in there, to be honest with you, if that's what it says.
Okay. So.
I send the deed off to John Vasapoli.
None of us up here are attorneys.
Okay.
We're just volunteers like you are, and we're just trying to do the best thing
Understood. That's why.
For the residents. And I understand why you're here tonight.
Right.
But we're not on that dog committee.
Right.
And I think that Mr. Vassipoli, our Town Counsel, in fact, being a Town Meeting Member, you can, really any resident can go to our Town Counsel and ask for legal opinion, especially you being a Town Meeting Member. So hopefully he gets back to you soon. And if, as Selectman Serena said, you'll see what the deed says and go forward from there.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree. Just, you know, I asked the question to our Town Manager, who has a background in law, and I just figured he would be able to give a little bit of insight or input on that. And it's been over a month. Like I said, it's been two years going on with this discussion. And like I said, the people are looking for answers. That's all I have to add, but.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I agree with Selectman Serena. If that deed says it's a children's park, then I can't see how we could turn it into a dog park. But again, I'm not an attorney, and I look forward to John's opinion on that as well.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else in the audience unless Mark would like to speak. And he's saying no. The last thing on the agenda is members' comments. Selectman Cogliano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to bring up a, on Thursday night at the Cowlum, we'll be having a night for Bill James, who's a former wrestling coach in Saugus that was paralyzed. Tickets are $50. You can get them at the door. We are expecting a great crowd, but it's a good cause, and all the proceeds will go to the James family. So that's, again, that's Thursday night, May 30th, at the Cowlum, from 6:00 to 10:00.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano. Selectman Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the Saugus Veterans Council, Steve Castanetti, and everyone that was involved, Town Manager, for the Memorial Day Parade. It was a wonderful event. There was a lot of turnout, and it was a little warm, but it was a great day. And I just want to thank everybody for remembering the fallen. And I'd just like to congratulate all the graduates from Saugus High School, as well as other colleges and high schools for graduating in the class of 2024. I wish them well and a bright future. Thank you.
Just to add, Madam Chair, because they never always get the credit, and I know everybody knows this, but DPW Building Maintenance Cemetery does a ton of work. Obviously, the police do a lot of the traffic and whatnot, but there's a lot of people, including volunteers, that are involved that do it quite a bit, leading up to this for weeks on end. And I just want to say, you know, a shout out to them because I think it's a real tribute to us coming together as a community and, you know, remembering our soldiers and their families. So.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Everybody, yeah. No, they always sort of, I think people don't know the distinctions.
I know. I say, and everyone else.
Because everybody says police and fire, but it's, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that are staff, and the volunteers that are involved with the Veterans Council. It's a huge event to put on. People think this stuff is easy and it just happens. There's a lot of work that happens to go on. And I just, you know, it's a tribute to everybody that comes together to make this happen for our community and really honoring and remembering, you know, our soldiers and their families.
And I want to mention Dan Schenna too, because Mr. Schenna was there on the flagging of the cemetery and.
Correct.
Everything went great. Gordon Shepard, as always.
Excellent, yeah.
So, but thank you.
The list goes on and on. You're always going to forget somebody. You're always going to forget somebody, but they work for me, so I'm always making sure that they, because I really appreciate what they do. A lot of them go above and beyond, and they come in the weekends and anything that comes up. And Selectman Riley and I talked during the, as it leads up to it, just to make sure there's anything we can do, is there anything last minute that the town can help support. And we're just really thankful for your group that puts this on and organizes it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Riley and Town Manager. Selectman Serena.
Yeah, just a few things. Sabres are having their 51st Annual Meeting and Dinner at Pocari's Wednesday, June 26. Tickets are $35. If you want to support the organization, it'd be great if you want to attend that event. You can go on saugus.org to find out all the details. The Saugus Veterans Council, again, I want to, it was a beautiful day. We all, all the board members marched in the parade. We attended the memorial service down a veteran's grave, and I want, it was great to, and I want to thank all the residents that showed out, came out to support the organization. It was a great day. And finally, Saugus High School graduation, it's Friday night, 6 o'clock, and I want to wish all the best to the graduating seniors this year and any future endeavors that they intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Serena. I want to echo my fellow board members' comments regarding the Veterans Day Parade. I want to thank the Town Manager, DPW Building Maintenance, everybody that was involved, all the volunteers. It was a phenomenal parade. Captain Castanetti did an outstanding job, as he always does. Just thank everybody who was involved, because I know it takes an awful lot to put on a parade like that. And the police, the fire, there was just a lot of people that really dedicated their services to make sure the parade went off, and it was just a phenomenal parade, as always. The graduates, congratulations. As Selectman Serena said, we all look forward to Friday night's graduation, and whether you're graduating from middle school, high school, elementary school, college, congratulations, and we wish you well. And lastly, our next meeting is June 6. It's next week. It's on a Thursday. I know it's kind of an odd night, but that was the time that we could all get together. And we did advertise for the liquor licenses, and we only had two applicants for the liquor licenses, but we'll be having that meeting on June 6. With that said, would somebody please make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And that's seconded by the chair. All those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. I hope everybody has a wonderful evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.